Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of November 22, 2011. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for their providing the beautiful floral arrangement they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. I would like to call on the city manager to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a few announcements this evening. The first one is there will not be a city council meeting on the fourth Tuesday in December. The only regular city council meeting in December will be held on December 13, 2011. The next announcement is the holiday tree lighting event will be held on Thursday, that's a week from this Thursday, December 1, 2011, at 5:30 PM at the Moore Memorial Building in City Park. It's always a lot of fun, hot chocolate cookies and Santa Claus, so make sure you're there. And also, I would like to announce that selected members of St. Bruno's St. Roberts Children's Choir have been selected to perform at the White House on December 19, along with other students from San Francisco Unified School District schools. This is indeed an honor and we would like to congratulate them and wish them well. If you want more information, please contact St. Roberts School. Presentations, we don't have any presentations this evening. Review the agenda, any items? Anybody want to change anything? Okay, we're okay. Approval of the minutes, city council meeting of special meeting of November 8, 2011 at City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Meeting of November 8, 2011. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action that may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
If there's nothing to be pulled, move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We don't have any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Good, we're moving right along tonight. Item number 10, conduct of business. A, administer the oath of office and present certificates of election to newly elected and reelected officials. City Clerk.
Okay, I'd like to call Irene O'Connell forward, please. Irene, if you'd raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. "I..."
Aye. Irene O'Connell.
"...do hereby solemnly swear..."
Do hereby solemnly, please swear.
"...that I will support and defend..."
That I will support and defend.
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
Constitution of the United States.
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
And the Constitution of the State of California.
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
To the Constitution of the United States.
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
And the Constitution of the State of California.
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
That I take this obligation freely.
"...without any mental reservation..."
Without any mental reservation.
"...or purpose of evasion..."
Or purpose of evasion.
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
"...the duties which I'm about to enter."
The duties which I'm about to enter.
Now you can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Irene O'Connell has been installed as council member of the city of San Bruno for a four-year term and that she is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening. Traditionally, this is a time when politicians thank the residents for voting them into office. Obviously, this isn't the case this time. We did not have to knock on doors, or make endless speeches, or explain once again why we have increased water bills. And actually, for that, I thank you all. There are, however, some thank yous that must be said. I would like to thank my parents, Mike and Marina Kaiser, for instilling in me the desire to serve my community, for the continuous help and encouragement. I would like to thank my family for their support and patience over the last 16 years. They have endured my attending seemingly endless meetings and nonstop political discussions, and I'm pleased to say they're all here tonight. When I started this 16 years ago, this one here was in diapers, so it's been a long time. I am proud and thankful to them, but mostly, I'm thankful for the residents of San Bruno. We, as a community, have been through a horrific event and are facing continuous challenges. The explosion in the Cressmore-Glenview neighborhood last year changed us as a city forever. You have shown your true colors. You have been generous, compassionate, and patient, particularly patient. You understood when staff had to defer your project or delay responding to your concerns in order to work on the explosion site. You have waited patiently, and some of you are still waiting for an answer to a question or a matter to be finished. For that and all the other ways you have been a neighbor, resident, and friend of San Bruno, I thank you. I also want to take this time to thank our staff. We are extremely privileged to have the people we do working for us. They truly care for the city and its residents. They give of themselves beyond what you would expect for just a paycheck. They deliver services during the routine times and the extraordinary times, during good weather and bad, day in and day out. I cannot tell you how many times I've been stopped and given compliments about the work our staff has done. Thank you. I want to give particular thanks to Connie Jackson. We are exceedingly fortunate to have her as our city manager. She is grace under pressure. She has a common sense, as well as a breadth of knowledge and experience, to help guide us through these times. She also has the unenviable job of translating this council's policy statements into actual physical city practices that work. Thank you, Connie, for being there for us. And most of the roses for you. And lastly, to this council, you're an exceptional group to work with. I appreciate your vision, your candor, and your assistance. Here's to four more years of moving San Bruno forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Could I ask Michael Salazar to please come forward? Okay, Michael, could you raise your right hand, please?
Aye.
Aye, Michael Salazar.
"Do hereby solemnly swear..."
Do hereby solemnly swear.
"...that I will support and defend..."
That I will support and defend.
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
Constitution of the United States.
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
Constitution of the State of California.
"...against all enemies, foreign and domestic..."
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
To the Constitution of the United States.
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
Constitution of the State of California.
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
That I take this obligation freely.
"...without any mental reservation..."
Without any mental reservation.
"...or purpose of evasion..."
Or purpose of evasion.
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
"...the duties which I'm about to enter."
The duties which I'm about to enter.
Lower your hand. "By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Michael Salazar has been installed as council member of the city of San Bruno for a four-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election." Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you, Carol. I just want to take a few minutes to say that it's a great honor to be coming back into this office for another four years. It's really hard to believe that two years ago, I was standing here at this very podium, speaking to this very council, asking for an opportunity to join you in providing leadership to this great city. And it's been quite a two years, starting with the disaster up in the Cressmore neighborhood. It really showed me what this city is made of, and I really feel that it brought us together as a council and as a city government. And it was, for all of the tragedy that came from it, it was an exemplary event of what we really are about and really helped affirm in me why I do this job. So going into another four years, I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity. I really enjoy working with this team, and I'm proud to be part of this team, so this is something I'm very much looking forward to. I just want to affirm to all the residents of San Bruno that we are here to serve the people, and I just want to let everyone know that I'm here to listen, and I hope that everyone takes advantage of my invitation to let me know what you think. Without the election, of course, we were, we didn't get the opportunity that we normally get to express our ideas and to hear the ideas of what our residents have to say, so it's an open invitation for anyone that is interested in speaking to me. My invitation is out there, and I know that the same goes for the rest of the council. So I also want to take an opportunity to thank my family. They're not here tonight, but I want to thank my wife Sandra and my two sons for their support and their continued support in allowing me to do what I enjoy doing and understanding why I need to do what I do. Thank you very much.
Twenty-two years ago, I ran for city clerk of San Bruno, and my campaign manager was Jim Ruane, who's coming forward now. He wasn't really involved in politics, but he went on to become the planning commissioner and then council member, and tonight, it thrills me to install him as our mayor. So, Jim.
Jim.
If you'll raise your right hand, please. "I..."
Jim Ruane.
"...do hereby solemnly swear..."
Do hereby solemnly swear.
"...that I will support and defend..."
That I will support and defend.
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
Constitution of the United States.
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
And the Constitution of the State of California.
"...against all enemies..."
Against all enemies.
"...foreign and domestic..."
Foreign and domestic.
"...that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
The Constitution of the United States.
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
The Constitution of the State of California.
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
That I take this obligation freely.
"...without any mental reservation..."
Without any mental reservation.
"...or purpose of evasion..."
Or purpose of evasion.
"...and that I will well and faithfully discharge..."
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
"...the duties which I'm about to enter."
The duties which I'm about to enter.
And you can lower your hand. "By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Jim Ruane has been installed as mayor of the city of San Bruno for a two-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Couple of brief comments. First of all, I want to introduce my family. They have all been by my side over these last two years. My wife, Noreen, my daughter Stephanie, my son Jim, my daughter-in-law Monica, my good friend Peter White, my niece Katie O'Malley, and Gavin, Patrick, and Brendan Ruane, my three grandsons. It's been quite the two years. Difficult budget issues and redevelopment threatened, mergers done and undone, and of course, a horrific explosion and fire that devastated the neighborhood and the city and tragically took our friends and neighbors. It was also two years in which shovels were finally placed in the ground for great separation, in which we completed the final phase of the crossing development, in which a new and long-awaited restaurant opened, and in which San Bruno has been recognized by some very high-tech companies as the place to be. Been around the country this last year and a half here, and a lot of people say to me, the first thing they come up and say is, "Did you ever imagine?" So I'm going to get a bunch of business cards to say, "No, I never did." But the highlight for me after two years as mayor is the reinforcement of something that I probably knew all along, the incredible heart and resilience of this community under the most difficult of circumstances. I said two years ago that I believe the city council and staff are the strongest in the entire peninsula and beyond. You've proven that. It has been a pleasure and honor to serve you as mayor, and I want to thank you for your confidence, the confidence you've placed in me. I look forward to serving you again. Thank you very much. And now, it's my pleasure to tell you that we're going to break for about 15 minutes because we have coffee and some drinks outside and some cookies. So 15 minutes, if you want, you're always welcome, as we always say, to stay for the rest of the exciting meeting, but after 15 minutes, if you're cookie'd out, you're welcome to go home. We have a little bit of business to conduct, but it won't take as much long after that, so 15 minutes.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Conduct of Business, item B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a time and expenses contract with Integrity Maintenance Solutions Americas, Inc., to provide engineering and technical support related to natural gas pipeline work in and around San Bruno.
Honorable Mayor, Council members, good evening. In my presentation tonight, I will focus on two aspects of this issue. First, what is the benefit and what is the purpose for this action for the city? And also, how the city will pay for it. The purpose and the benefit of this action is to minimize the impact on our residents of any ongoing action by PG&E. Since the unfortunate incident of the September night of 2010, based on NTSB and CPUC requirements, PG&E performs system-wide inspection, pressure testing many of their transmission lines. Our community understandably is highly sensitive around any PG&E activity in our community. This contract will provide us with technical support and technical expertise, pipeline experience, assisting us in our oversight, providing constructive input in our approval process of this ongoing activity performed by PG&E. This is a service level above and behind any requirement to represent the interest of our residents the best way possible. One, maybe the easiest way to describe how this service really looks like in real life, I will describe one example of what happened just last night. A few weeks ago, PG&E applied for an encroachment permit to pressure to hydrotest one small section of line 132 at Hilli Station. Last week, PG&E communicated with us that is their intent to pressure test that section of the pipe using nitrogen instead of water. Having this expertise available to us was possible for us to assess the increased risk involved, also assessing the possible consequences, and developing possible mitigating solutions for those possible consequences. Such as, last night when PG&E performed this test, they had to close the road to divert the traffic for the duration of the test. Also, they had to install filters to filter the air vented through this process to prevent any release of smell in the neighborhood and to communicate properly with the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, the installation of these air filters for any purging or any testing in the city or around the city in the last few months is the result of this increased oversight and technical support provided by this consultant. It's our intent, our recommendation is to pay for these expenses using the trust fund. I am available for any question you might have.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. You mentioned that the main concern is for the residents of the community. So you gave this example of what happened last night. Can you explain what the residents knew about what was going to happen? I'm just trying to get an idea of what we do and what PG&E typically does, you know, when there are residents within the direct vicinity of a testing.
Initially, a few weeks back, when the approval process started, PG&E sent out letter to the residents around the site, communicating them about the intent of the testing, how much is intended to last the testing, what possible, what they will see and what they will experience. Also, they canvassed the neighborhood, knocked on doors in the last two days, updating them of the evolution of the testing process. And also, I was advised and the city was advised that they were told also that they are using nitrogen instead of water, which was the last minute change in the process. Also, they were communicated with about extended hours. They ended up working on the site until 2:00, 2:00 a.m. this morning, and they had an approval to finish their work tonight at 8:00, not later than 8:00. But the residents really just wanted this work to be finished and to be able to go back to their normal life. This was very disruptive in that neighborhood. All of those homes are very close to that site and was, this was a disruptive, ongoing activity to that neighborhood.
If I could add, just very briefly, the director has properly, in my view, attempted to provide some of the information or give you a little bit of a flavor for the type of work and the benefit that it's provided. I would like to caution, however, that we are not taking over or assuming responsibility in any manner for PG&E's work. And in fact, in many of the instances where the consultant has assisted us, and we hope will continue to be able to perform those very valuable services, things don't always go as we would hope and expect. And the work last night, for example, went much longer than we had anticipated and that, I believe, was identified to the residents. It's just an example of the type of coordination that, what the director has given you is some examples of the type of coordination that we're utilizing continues to be an ongoing, nearly everyday process to address, to try and stay half a step behind instead of three steps behind the work efforts that PG&E is undertaking within the community. Our interest, as the director indicated, is that we provide the best protection and representation of residents' interests, as well as providing or attempting to provide the highest quality work performance and resident interface. It is not this consultant nor it is the city's responsibility to provide that interface directly, but we're doing our best to try and make sure that the work is being done in an accountable and appropriate manner, given the heightened level of sensitivities that exist within San Bruno.
Through the chair. I would use the cliche, it's kind of a trust but verify, giving us the tools, having some expertise. I think we've had somebody who's been up there, Mari Medina, working up there diligently, putting his heart dedication into this, and I think this helps give a tool. And I think with what we've experienced, what we've gone through, I think our residents would want us to do what it takes to try to ensure the best effort is put forward and that things are checked, double-checked, and that we're all doing what's right for the safety of the community.
During the decommissioning of line 132 and also the hydrotesting of the southern portion of 132, this expert was on-site during the whole time of the performance of those two projects to support Mari with additional expertise in the field.
Through the chair.
Is this person, are we anticipating any work to be done by PG&E or emergency things that this group can also interface with? For example, if something happens on Seventh Avenue. Let me rephrase that. Is this contract only for the Glenview neighborhood, or is this for any place in San Bruno that the residents might be concerned? And if that, well, answer me that part, and then I have another question.
Would be our call, and they were called on for work in the whole city and around us. How I said, they were called in for work performed outside of the cities, either further up north when the relining of 132 took place in South City, or when the hydrotesting was taking place further down south. Will be our intent when anything will happen which need additional expertise, our department, the city doesn't have specifically any pipeline expertise. And if it's our assumption that this expertise will help us to provide a better service to our residents, yes, they will be called on.
Okay. And then, if something happens and somebody, they call, a resident calls PG&E and say they smell gas and that PG&E does not respond in a timely manner, can that person call you or call the city and get the number of the contract? I mean, how are we going to work it if somebody calls and says, "PG&E is not responding to me, I'm very concerned"? What can you do?
Our process so far was to, how the city manager emphasized, and that was one of the main focus on our part so far, not to try to do PG&E's job. It's our intent to hold them accountable and make them responsible to do their job. They should have the expertise to perform their job according to all of the requirement and how our role is displayed in this, to hold them responsible, accountable. In that specific instance, the city will make sure that they will respond as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. That's comforting.
So I wanted to just clarify that the role IMS will play is really in mitigating potential quality-of-life type issues and not safety-type issues in these type of inspections.
So IMS, the purpose of the contract is to provide assistance and support to staff in overseeing and permitting PG&E construction work in San Bruno. That covers both, both of the types of issues that you've addressed. But again, I want to emphasize that they don't do the work, we don't do the work, and neither of us, the city of San Bruno nor its consultant, assume responsibility for the work. But it does cover both of the bases that you identified and any others where we believe that there is something that just needs to be looked at a little bit more closely.
Okay. Because there is, I think, some level of concern if PG&E, that is the trusted supplier of gas, can't be completely trusted to do this work. And CPUC, which oversees that utility, also can't be trusted to do this, that we have to actually go and hire somebody else to oversee all of this, is on a larger scale concerning to me and probably should be to most other cities around here.
Yeah, so I want to emphasize that we don't, let's just go backwards a little bit. Before the tragic events of September 9th, 2010, the city pretty routinely issued encroachment permits to PG&E and to other utilities without a high level of scrutiny to the work and to how the work was to be performed. It is within this arena of the additional and frequent work that's going on in our neighborhoods. The level of interest that our residents are now expressing in the work that's going on within our city that gives us an impetus to make sure that the work is, to the best of our ability, and we have no pipeline expertise, again, or at least, well, now we do a little bit, but not a lot, that the intent really is to simply be able to do what we do, which is just simply evaluate, should we allow this thing to go forward in our street or in our right-of-way? And have we done basic due diligence to understand what the work is, why it's necessary, and what's the best way to do it? It's really not a regulatory or a, you know, we're not attempting to get into anybody else's territory, simply to do the job that is now required of the city of San Bruno. And that's different than the job that was previously required of the city of San Bruno with relation to routine PG&E work in our community.
And our sole recourse, in the event that we don't agree with PG&E's approach, is that we just wouldn't issue an encroachment permit and not allow them to do the work.
In most cases, well, in cases where the work is being performed in the right-of-way and an encroachment permit is applicable, then that is and has been and an encroachment permit is applicable, then that is and has been a very effective means of managing the compliance with what the city believes is a necessary performance. We have, I would say, received PG&E's attention in a high level of interest in meeting the standards that we put out. Clara mentioned, for example, the work that has gone on outside of our city limits but adjacent to our community. PG&E has no real, we have no real authority to say you can't do that work or you must do it this other way. But we've, I think, been reasonably successful in achieving a level of attention and coordination to, at least listening to and trying to address the city's interests.
Okay. And one more point directly on the contract. I believe the way it's structured is we'll reimburse this contractor for all actual expenses plus 15%. And that, to me, doesn't sound reasonable, but I'm wondering if that's standard practice, that they would uplift their expenses by that much?
It's a very standard practice. And even with that additional expense level and the 15%, at the end, their average hourly rate comes out pretty reasonable versus any other consultant services provided to us in this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, action?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement for a Vector 2100-plus jetter vacuum combination sewer storm cleaning truck from Maryland. Industrial Trucks Inc. in the amount of $420,779.68.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am presenting, excuse me, I am presenting the Public Services Department recommendation to replace the existing Vector or Combination Truck. For my presentation, I'll explain the following five topics regarding the recommendation. First, what the truck does and how it is utilized by city staff. Its current condition, new technology of the proposed Vector and its positive effect on maintenance, its importance in relation to state stormwater and sewer regulatory compliance, and the sole source bid and why. The Vector or Combination Truck itself. The Vector Truck has two main capabilities. It uses a very strong vacuum tube to suck debris or any other solids from sewer or storm utilities. The other aspect is a long pressurized hose that is used to clean sewer or storm drain mains. The existing Vector has been shared between the wastewater and stormwater divisions since the year 2000. The truck has been used by the divisions to clean sewer mains, storm drain mains, storm drain grates that become flooded by debris, and sewer manholes. This proactive maintenance assures that the city sewer and storm utilities continue functionally like they were designed. The truck is also used to respond to and mitigate SSOs or sanitary sewer overflows. One very important aspect of a combination unit truck is the ability to minimize or capture the amount of sewage spilled from an SSO incident. An example of this was February 16th of 2009, where the Vector was used to capture 6,000 gallons of sewage before it exited a manhole. Therefore, the overall amount spilled was decreased and the severity of the incident was minimized. The current condition. Due to the truck's extensive use over the past 12 years, the truck's condition has deteriorated to a level that has rendered it ineffective. Normal operating hours for a truck of this age were ranged between 6,000 to 7,000 hours. Our existing truck has 9,290 operating hours and has 35,428 driving miles. However, with most large trucks or machinery, you gauge off of the operating hours. Many parts are worn out, such as the debris container that has been patch welded several times, the suction boom which leaks water and debris, and many other small operating pieces such as switches. As with all vehicles past their life expectancy, it is down for service more often and then not available for operational needs. New technology of the proposed Vector and its positive effect on maintenance. The replacement truck has new technology that is not present on the older truck. The new Vector will have a telescoping boom that can vacuum underwater. This will be used to clear blocked full-capture storm drain inlet devices that get clogged by debris. It will also vacuum low settling silt that is submerged under full-flow sewer lines. The new model also has a positive displacement blower vacuum system that is more powerful than the existing Vector's fan system. This technology will improve proactive maintenance and task completion times. Staff plans to use the new unit approximately four to five days per week for sewer and storm water tasks. Relation to stormwater and sewer regulatory compliance. Both sewer and stormwater regulatory compliance state that utilities must have proper resources to contain sewer overflows and complete debris removal from blocked storm drain inlets. We have used our Vector time and time again for these very tasks. The replacement of the current Vector will assure that we have the proper resources to respond to incidents correctly and complete sewer and storm main maintenance. Proper response and maintenance will help us keep our proactive cleaning commitment and keep us away from regulatory fines. The sole source bid and why. There are several reasons why there is a sole source bid for this truck. The brand Vector that is supplied by Maryland Truck Incorporated is the only manufacturer that met the city's requirements for a combination truck. The operating system is the same as the existing truck. This will save us in time and money that would be needed to train staff on another brand's operating system. The city garage is also familiar with the maintenance of this brand and has spare parts that can be used on the new replacement. Finally, there are several safety aspects to this Vector brand that are not present in other brands. Other companies have operators working at the back of the truck or at the side of the truck. This exposes staff to traffic and danger. Vector's operating system has the operators working in the front of the truck where they're shielded by the truck itself. Due to these operational and specialized equipment needs, the department received one federal GSA sole source bid. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Rico.
A couple of things, thank you for the detailed report. My understanding is, thanks through staff, is that year-to-date, we have 14 SSOs. Year-to-date, this time last year, we had 35. So, and I was a little confused, the city manager helped me out, is that when it referenced in the report about the April 2011, which was on the consent calendar, was for a different, it was for a Vector 2110. This is a Vector 2100. The Vector 2110 is the one that was brought forward and will be delivered in December. So that was 364,000. This item is 420-plus thousand, so we're talking about $900,000 in equipment. What I'm also seeing is a decline in the SSOs without these apparatuses yet, without increasing, my understanding, this headcount. So obviously, something's working without these additional resources thus far. I don't want to jinx us, though. So again, I want us to be, I know it was already brought forward in the budget, it was already discussed, but I want us to be mindful of the expenditures and the resources. And also, when we get new apparatuses, obviously, if our anticipation is three to five times a week here, three to five times a week here, how much staff do we have to be in these vehicles to be operating these preventative SSOs? You'd indicated, staff indicated to me, what kind of areas that they would work in, not specifically geographically in the community, but what kind of tasks they would be on. So I'm also wondering, for the preventative aspects, which is what needs to be done in order to prevent what's already occurred from the past, what areas in this community can you tell me will be serviced by this piece of apparatus for the preventative methods?
Yes, no problem. The avenues will be serviced by these trucks due to the fact of their small diameter. The sewer mains and the avenues are five-inch in diameter. They have a low angle of slope, which causes solids to settle out. Sewage needs to travel at two feet per second so that solids remain suspended. So therefore, the avenues is an area where we currently spend a lot of our maintenance time, and we will use these trucks in that area. We will also use these trucks for backyard easement lines to perform the maintenance and to try to remove roots that are inherent to backyard lines because it's in the backyard and there's sometimes more trees back there. They'll also be used in areas much like the Trenton neighborhood where the sewer main is behind a lot of the houses just north of San Berro Avenue, where we need to get up there, another area of root intrusion. Another area would be grease hotspots, areas where business or restaurants that grease can be generated from. San Mateo Avenue, Cherry, just east of Bay Hill Mall. So those would be the specific areas that we would use them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any action?
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10D, review draft ordinance and bylaws and provide direction on recommended changes in the personnel board.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. At the last council meeting, you directed staff to bring this item back regarding the proposed changes to the personnel board. These changes were discussed at the September Personnel Board meeting with Council liaison O'Connell. Both the Personnel Board and the council member discussed the completion of the major work program by the Personnel Board, and it was decided it wasn't necessary to meet on a monthly basis, and it was recommended that the board meet on a quarterly basis and as needed. The other issue was that there were ongoing, there have been ongoing vacancies on the Personnel Board, and several vacancies in the last year. It was also recommended that we move from a five-member board to a three-member board. Both of these changes would require changes to the municipal code and the Personnel Board bylaws for council adoption. The Personnel Board bylaws, Personnel Board municipal code, I'm sorry, the municipal code goes through the roles and responsibilities, the term requirements and other items that are basically in some of the items in the Personnel bylaws. So staff is recommending that we remove those items from the municipal code and put them in the bylaws. And given the nature of the reduced workload from the Personnel Board, it's recommended to make these changes. The draft municipal code and Personnel Board bylaws are attached to the staff report. The Personnel Board did not have any objections to both the bylaws, changes to the bylaws or the municipal code, or changes to the number of meetings and the number of members. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Good. We went through this, I believe, last meeting. Any additional questions or comments from the council members?
Through the chair. On what I said last time, can you tell me, or just list the items of role and responsibilities that are taken out?
From?
From what was to what is proposed?
Nothing's been taken out of the roles and responsibilities. We're transferring those that were in the municipal code into the bylaws.
So everything that was as of now, with the, if this is adopted, would still remain the same, identical?
Yes. There were some overlap in the bylaws and the municipal code, and that we're making sure that they're consistent and that they're all reflected in the Personnel Board bylaws.
Do they still do proctoring?
They still proctor.
And they still would?
They still will.
We have something in here about subcommittee. This is where my concern, as I spoke last time, is about a three-member. Again, I don't know of any committee commissioner board that we appoint that has three members. When we talk about having a subcommittee, that means there's one. When you're talking about a quorum, that means there's two. Again, say that the city clerk put out for applicants, we have applicants that interviewed. And again, when we want people to be involved in government, I do not know why we would want to limit it when we're asking four times a year and we have people that are wishing to serve. I can't support this with three members.
I just want to reinforce that the Personnel Board themselves agreed that three members works. Part of the problems, and you notice from the staff report, there were seven vacancies in two years. So the people that wanted to serve wanted to do something, and there wasn't that much to do. So I think it's kind of a disservice to appoint someone to a board or commission that doesn't do a lot of what they expect. So the current commission had no problem with only having three. They felt they could deal with the workload, and in fact, they were kind of relieved that they wouldn't have to wait around for another person to make a quorum. So with that, I'll introduce, oh, no, I guess there's nothing to introduce.
Ken would like to say a few words.
I just wanted to concur with what Irene said. And what really concerns me is that they have every good intention to volunteer and be part of these committees. And it's, and I think maybe just the Personnel Board, Personnel Board in its unique character and the duties that it does is the first to, you know, to be reduced in this fashion. But I really think that, you know, when we go through these interviews, that it is, it should almost be a requirement that these applicants have some knowledge of what they're going to experience in each committee. And so to ask the simple question, have you attended a personnel board meeting? Have you attended a park and rec commission meeting? Should be answered with a yes, to be considered. Because, yes, they may have that expertise, they may have a lot of expertise and talent to serve on this board. And then they get appointed and then they attend, and that's what happens, is that they lose interest or they feel that they're not, their talents aren't being used or challenged. So I think that's something we need to consider. I believe that the Personnel Board has gone through a large evolution in the last 15 years, and they've, you know, in our services, you know, as in human resources, has changed over the years, too. So I think it's an appropriate change.
Good. Anyone else? Why don't we give direction by motion?
Okay. I move that we concur with the staff recommendation and move from a five-member board to a three-member board through attrition.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Do you have your direction?
And the monthly meeting schedule from?
That's part of the recommendation.
Sorry. Yes. So that's part of the staff recommendation.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Item number 11, reported commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't none this evening. Comments from council members?
I just want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. I'm sure we all do.
Thank you. I have just a quick little comment. Last Thursday and Friday, the city manager and the director of public services joined me in New Orleans on an invitation from the National Pipeline, the Pipeline Safety Trust. We were asked to tell our story and convey some of the lessons learned. Also attending were Renee Morales, who lost her daughter in the explosion and fire of September 9th, 2010, and Jackson Vanderbeekin of the San Francisco Chronicle. Congresswoman Jackie Speer offered her comments via video from Washington. Although we have had many opportunities to tell our story, this was really the first time the attendance was composed primarily of pipeline industry officials. We were very well received. They also heard the stories about Marshall, Michigan, Allentown, Pennsylvania, and Bellingham, Washington. And based on individual and group comments, I believe presentations such as this will further legislation to make us all a lot safer. And we will continue our efforts aggressively. So I wanted to let you know that we attended last week and it was quite an experience. So unless you have any questions. Or city manager, would you like to add anything? Your city manager, would you like to add anything?
I think you've covered it very well, Mr. Mayor, and given the number, the fairly large number of activities that we have pursued over the last 15 months since the tragic incident in our town, it was unique in the regards that you articulated that this was a first opportunity for us to really engage and I think have a meaningful dialogue and impact with representatives from the industry. And there were representatives from the industry from nationwide. It was not a huge attendance, about 160 people. But again, it was, you could be very proud of our mayor and the way that our experience is being both represented as well as received and understood as a marker for what needs to be done going forward in order to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And again, I would just echo the comments from the mayor about what a meaningful opportunity it was for us as well to learn and to understand not only how the incident that occurred in San Bruno fits in with the bigger nationwide picture, but also to hear the stories and understand what has actually happened elsewhere in the nation. Before the incident in San Bruno, I think we, like many others, might have been naively immune or ignorant of an understanding of the tragic consequences of a pipeline failure. What was particularly interesting about this situation is that having had our incident and our experience, I think we continued a bit of naivete about how similar types of incidents might be affecting others in the nation. It was a sobering and very interesting experience.
Thank you. Item 13, closed session. We had our closed session before the meeting and so we don't have to go to closed session. Carol?
I just wanted to add that we'll be doing the annual, the reorganization at the next meeting and the appointment of a new vice mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And we will now adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held right here in December 13th, 2011 at the senior center. And once again, to echo some other council members' comments, Happy Thanksgiving to all. And if you're traveling, a safe Thanksgiving and we'll see you on December 13th. Thank you.